Center Street, Nelson Street, and Greenwood Way. One eighty, we're at Center Street is for two thousand three dollars and fifty cents. Next one is Nelson Street for one thousand twenty-three dollars and fifty cents. And the other one is Greenway.
I don't have those on the notes.
For...
Yep, they're right at, uh, we skipped the minutes, so...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Right after the minutes. But you can continue with that.
No, we, we voted on the minutes.
For that part, you go right back up to the minutes.
Not on the record, though.
Uh, what's that?
Uh, not with the recording going.
Oh, I'm sorry. So you want me to go back to the minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Yes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Invoices.
Motion to approve the invoices.
Second.
I would say...
Do you want me to read them?
No, for the second.
The second one, Nelson Street?
So do, I would, I would get a, I would get a second from another board member?
It would be you. Say second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. And one abstention.
Discussion and proposal, vote. Pennsaukett School permanent request. I have requested to receive myself from the decision as I am an employee of the school district. So, voice of chairman. Lisa Chandler is not here, so, um, somebody else will have to, Rebecca, or Wally, or anybody.
Yeah, what do you got? See ya.
Okay, so at the last meeting, we had discussed that the Pennsaukett School is going forward with the new construction of the middle school, high school, um, that is straddled between West Newbury and Groveland, and we had discussed that there is a portion of that that lies within the town of Groveland specifically where they are proposing to, um, put together the stadium and the, um, structure underneath the stadium, which is seven thousand square feet. So, at the last public meeting, we had discussed whether or not it would be beneficial to have this as a minor site plan instead of a full site plan because the entire project is being reviewed by West Newbury, uh, and the majority of the project does in fact lie within West Newbury, and the Conservation Commission in both West Newbury and in Groveland will be reviewing it under their, um, both the local bylaw here in Groveland and then also under the State Wetlands Protection Act. So, under our bylaws, we are able to go for a minor site plan, uh, site plan, which would allow us to waive a lot of the requirements, specifically the site, um, the public hearing, and some of the peer review requirements, so we can have the applicant come in, give a presentation, describe exactly what work is going to be taking place here in Groveland, and then the board could draft a motion for a decision of some nature that would have conditions that we would receive peer review, uh, based upon what's being reviewed by West Newbury for the section, again, that lies within Groveland. If you look at your packets, there's a map, and it shows exactly where it splits. It really does split right across diagonally at the stadium, and it really is only a little bit of a, the, I mean, the parking lot, very minimal spaces in, in Groveland. The structure is entirely within Groveland, and then, uh, pieces of the turf are in Groveland. The actual egress from the site onto one thirteen is not changing, um, and the length and distance are not changing. They're removing the current structure that sits on the site in Groveland now, so they're actually, um, decreasing the impervious area. But again, I think that, uh, the, the last meeting, the board kind of hinted at the fact that maybe a minor site plan would be amenable as a way to proceed, and in order for that to take place and to inform the applicant, we need the board to take a formal vote, and at the last meeting, we did not have enough members to vote.
All right, just a, just a question, um, to start. So, they're doing a major review anyway.
They are doing a major review, yes.
So, and since we are part of the Pennsaukett system and the taxpayers are paying a big chunk of this, uh, we should be part of that, even if it's on, uh, as you said, a minor, a minor operation from the planning board's standpoint, but I think since they're doing the major review, whatever comes in, we should be just receiving copies of all of that.
So I think that the biggest thing is that, in order to save on cost because of the way that it's been funded and because it's split between the multiple communities, including Merrimack, who although the building does not sit within their, their boundaries, it still, um, services their schoolchildren. So I think that what the idea was is that while it is getting a comprehensive review, um, that because the actual structure on the stadium's standpoint is in Groveland, there really is no jurisdiction of West Newbury to enforce any of our, uh, or protect any of our interests in terms of what they're doing there. So, by examining the only portion that lies in Groveland, that was the intent of the minor site plan, um, and, but as part of that, through the decision process, we could require or request to be notified of the additional proceedings as they, through the permitting process in its entirety. So I'm just trying to think of a way to utilize that without, because otherwise, we, at the request of the team that's putting this together, um, I forget the architect's, um, name, I'm sorry, but...
Doran, Woody.
Uh, they had mentioned that, um, we would probably want to do joint hearings, so you would be meeting with the, if we did a full site plan, you would be meeting with the West Newbury Planning Board. We would have to have meetings and, and arrange schedules and, and do all of that with the peer review and receiving information, and it would just be a very convoluted process. So while we would be CC'd on that correspondence, we wouldn't necessarily be involved with that, uh, the public hearing process, because again, the majority of the project resides within West Newbury and not necessarily Groveland.
Right, so, so I'm just coming from the Groveland standpoint, clearly our regs, um, and zoning bylaws and, and wherever else is necessary under, on this review will, will come into play. What I was just saying is, is that, that's only one little, little portion of a mega project that affects, you know, every citizen in this town that's paying taxes right now and future children and future residents. So, if there's a way to get those reports copied in, hearings of the board's choice to attend, and for that matter, residents, uh, to attend, and then our portion, obviously here on home turf, to, um, get that process under review. If it's just a stadium, we can go through a minor review for them, because our laws, like you said, aren't going to have any effect in West Newbury.
They have a, a little bit in terms of the amount of parking and the size of the structure, but I mean, again, through a minor site review process, we could probably go through the regulations fairly quickly.
Yeah, I, I, I think that's fine, provided that we leave an option that if we need more detail on something, or if we have to have our own peer review on just the Groveland stuff to comply with our regulations, and to keep our citizens happy and informed, I think that should be an option in there.
Whatever the board wants to do, I just need to know whether or not, uh, proceeding with a full filing of a site plan approval, or whether or not a minor site plan approval, waiving the actual public hearing process for that would be amenable to the board.
I, I don't think the public hearing should be waived, because that's how people are going to find out, whether they're on camera or not here.
Well, they will be informed based upon the filing that happened with, with West Newbury and the communication through the project team and the building committee. It's mostly...
And, I, I still think we should have the hearings, because we're, we're the ones that are going to be hearing all these items, and if, whether it's brief or not, depends on what the actual project looks like, but I think having a, a public hearing is...
It's just, I think, again, one of the major concerns was the cost and how to keep the cost low for, um, the applicant and, which is essentially the, the Pennsaukett School District, to, to try and figure that out, do multiple notices, multiple legal notices, multiple permitting. I think, you know, there was discussions of waiving fees, which I'm, I'm sure the board would be amenable to doing, but just the other costs associated with that, the engineer's time, the architect's time.
Yeah, but I, I still don't, I hear all that, but I think we have an obligation to our constituents to make sure that, that goes well in a here, so, um...
That's why I brought it to you for a vote.
Yeah.
It sounds like we're going to get a full site plan anyways.
Yeah, the, the site plan, I'm not, not worried too much about. It's the public hearing ability.
I'm worried about the minor part of it, though.
Um, if we can get...
Yeah.
The filings and have a hearing, I mean, and even in the minor, we can do a hearing. I don't see much, much more of expenses on sending a notice out.
Well, there'd be, there'd be a hearing, but you'd have to advertise in your, your...
So they can put it on the same advertising they're putting on all the other ones, just add the date. I mean, it's...
It's, it's just a different cost, it's different dates, it's different scheduling, but if, if that's what the board would like to do, then that's what the board would like to do, I'm not...
Yeah, I think you should have a hearing, I mean, it's...
We're going to hold them up?
No, I, I don't want to hold them up. I think that that should, if they're having a public hearing anyway, on a legal notice, they could, you know, Groveland, it's on this date, and on Merrimack, it's on that date. It's, it's really not an expense item to save with that mega of a project to make sure everybody's informed.
I think we'll be chimed in on the major site plan anyways.
Yeah, but, but we can still do a minor review, but still have the hearing. I don't think that's...
Well, it would be a hearing in the sense that it would be on the agenda, it would just be, as you just described, though, the butter notification would, would not be there if we went through the minor site plan.
Yeah, just, I, I still think we need to have a public hearing notice that goes out, and that's minor expense, that's...
I think that West Newbury can reach out to multiple towns, or it could be...
Right, I think it's, it can be in the same notice. If, if they're putting in the same paper, they just say, Groveland, it's this night, and Merrimack, it's that night, and I, I think it's very easy to do. So, uh, I, I would tend to fly a motion for the, for the approval of the hearing process to have the hearing, the minor on the review, because they're just doing a mega review, okay, and then just our regulations on what we're doing in Groveland, but to inform the people and make them be here, you know, allow them to be here to ask questions. I don't think we'd be doing our due diligence if we waived off a hearing. Might not be anybody there, but at least we'll have it.
So that's, would it be a waste? It might not be anybody there.
Right, but it'll be recorded on camera, they can play, watch it a few times, and they can't come back at us and say, hey, you didn't, you're known, or, it's just too much to go wrong on that. I think it's going to be brief, no matter what, because of the mega structure and everything else that's going up there. I mean, this is a minor part, but to advert, to, to say there's an expense for a hearing notice, to add one more sentence and legal ad, Groveland is on this date, is minor, and just put them all together, just make them low cost that way, just advertise them all at the same time. So that would be my suggestion to the board.
Take a vote, or...
Um, so we would need to have an official vote. The last time, uh, the only, we only had two members, Bob, obviously not be able to vote, so with, um, a majority of vote with those present, so we would need to vote.
I'm going with minor.
Minor with a, um, public hearing, or minor without a public hearing?
Without a public hearing. I'm going minor without a public hearing.
I'm going minor with a hearing.
But we'll be chimed in on the major aspect of it.
Yeah, the major I'm not worried about, because we'll get all that. It's, it's the hearing here that I want to advertise for our part, not their part. That's all.
Just to build, I mean, that's, they're going to...
Well, they said there's a substructure under it, and, I don't know, maybe they'll introduce other parts at the same time, I, that's all. I'm just thinking out for the folks here in Groveland that are paying, that are footing this bill.
So what?
That's all. I don't want to add anything to it, I just want to, you know...
So I would say that that's two to one?
Is that how you're voting?
It's all voting.
Okay.
All, all in favor?
Uh, for the minor?
For the minor.
For the minor?
Minor with advertising?
No.
No advertising.
Minor with hearing.
No advertising.
So we can do a roll call?
Yeah.
If that's what, so we'll have Brad.
I vote for minor with the hearing, to inform the public.
Minor without the hearing?
Minor without the hearing.
Wally?
It stands, yeah. So... Hey, what's next?
Okay. E. McKinnon, Nelson Street.
At this time, I think I'm going to recuse myself, it's for me, so...
Yep.
Go to the audience.
No problem. Request a amendment in approval for a site plan, special permit and stormwater management permit issued from February fifth, two thousand nineteen, and we have the engineer here to explain everything, so... And Brad has excused himself from the meeting.
Good evening. E. McKinnon with Jones and Beach Engineers, uh, was here back in the bedroom, moved the initial site plan approval. Tonight, we're here just for two, um, small items, amendments to the plan. The first item that we're going to discuss is basically a reduction in the footprint of the proposed stormwater pension basin, um, the integration basin. Based on some feedback, um, from local residents and just from the developer in general, is the pond initially actually extended slightly into the private right-of-way. The idea behind that was that this pond does receive, um, a significant portion of the runoff from Nelson Street. And so, the intent here is that, the worry is that getting into that right-of-way would potentially inhibit the development of that roadway by another landowner on the street. So what we've done is, I've reduced the size of the basin, the footprint size. By doing that, I've basically increased the slope of the, um, side slopes. By doing this, I had to modify, um, the modeling in our drainage software. I created a brand-new drainage report that we passed on to Rebecca and, uh, the review engineer at TEC, um, and basically showed that we initially went from a reduction of seventy-five percent in the hundred-year storm to a reduction of seventy-three percent, and that's in relation to the peak flow off the site. You may remember this project, it's kind of in a natural low area, so there's not really a natural outlet, so the idea here is that we're trying to promote as much infiltration back into the ground here to alleviate some flooding concerns that, um, have existed historically. So we still have a, a drastic reduction in flow with this smaller footprint. Just today, um, there were some discussions about potentially, um, pulling in one end of the pond to provide some additional space, um, for the installation of a gate and some fencing, um, adjacent to the emergency egress point. Um, the end, I'm talking about the south end of the pond, um, we have the gravel egress, um, with the knox box. Um, so it's been proposed that we might be able to provide, hopefully, maybe eight to twelve feet of additional by moving the pond in. By doing this, um, I would need to update the drainage design. Um, I believe Rebecca has a letter from TEC that she's going to, the engineer has kind of agreed with this design that I'm presenting to you in that packet. Um, so obviously, it would have to be conditional upon me doing that small revision and having the review engineer update his memo, uh, just, again, confirming that the design still meets all town regulations, uh, and state regulations that were required to meet. Um, so hopefully, if, uh, I can get the board to accept that, I might be able to make that small modification, um, and make the, conditional upon TEC updating their letter based on that small change. Uh, I'll go over the second item quickly, and then I'll take any questions. The second I'm here over here for tonight is a catch basin that is within Salem Street, uh, right at the intersection of Nelson and Salem Street. There's an existing catch basin there against some sloped, um, paved berm, and there was concern in the past that a lot of water was flowing down Nelson Street, and it appeared that essentially water was bypassing that catch basin. Um, there was a member, um, a town employee that went out and did clean that basin. I inspected it today. It still has a lot of material in it, but the pipe, from what I can tell, the pipe to exit that catch basin is now exposed. Um, we do have a video of some rain events that it actually operates as a catch basin now. Um, I think the concern before is, it sounds like it might not have been cleaned in quite some time, and it was backing up out of that catch basin. The design that we had proposed before was a small paved berm. Um, I don't want, it, it wouldn't be something as drastic as a speed bump, but because Nelson Street does fall away, um, it may act like that if you move it fast enough. The hope is that, hopefully by that catch basin being cleaned, is that there is no need for this diversion berm, um, and part of the reasoning for that is, historically, if you create these berms, it will get beat up by plows over time, that's a big thing. Um, we are, it's existing pavement, so we're going to be needing to mill the pavement and hopefully tie in and create a tight joint there. Um, so the hope is that by removing that berm, we can improve the, uh, long-term, um, integrity of that pavement. Um, it would just be a normal overlay in that area, hopefully, um, but the existing pavement's actually in good shape, so, um, the hope is that the catch basin, as long as it remains clean, will, will act, um, as it should, and that's what we've witnessed now that the DPW has cleaned it out. Um, so that's kind of the gist of the two items that we're here for. Um, I don't know if anybody has any questions on the pond, or would like to discuss, hopefully, a small revision to the pond, but...
No, no, I just, why, why are you moving the pond down this way?
So we have this, you know, thi- this, uh, secondary exit, um, has been placed there for fire egress.
Right. Is, is that what they requested, basically?
It's not a request from them. Um, so I've provided a truck template, um, it's not in your packet there, but it's part of the initial, the second item, and a fire truck can make it out.
Yeah.
But I guess our concern is the knox, the gate currently, you know, once they actually go to construct it.
Right.
I don't think the contractor wants it right up on the top of the pond.
Oh, yeah.
Um, and essentially, by doing that, it would provide, I guess, what you would call a shelf before you drop into the pond, so...
Right.
You know, fire trucks exiting, it might be easier for them to exit the site.
Absolutely, no.
Obviously, as long as I can prove that it still meets stormwater regulation by...
No, I was just watching, um, the planning board meeting last night, and they were, they brought this up because of, I mean, uh, I mean, of course, they're, they're, they're going through the fire department thing, and then, you know, and, the fire department brought this up, and, but, I mean, I have no issues with it at all, I just was asking why you slid it that way, which is, I think is smart, you know, so, no problem.
Just providing them as much ability to swing the truck.
Yep, absolutely, yep.
Really can't, in a perfect world, to follow what I put on the computer.
Oh, yeah, uh, no, no, absolutely, so, yep.
Kind of like driving, same.
Okay.
Okay. Bob, how often do they clean those catch basins typically in Groveland?
Once a year.
Once a year? And how deep's the sump?
Well, yeah, I mean, that, that might not even be a real catch basin.
No, it isn't a catch basin.
Yeah, that's just a...
It's a gutter inlet.
Yeah, so it, it might not even have a bottom.
So are you, are you thinking it's, potentially, it's only a two-foot, say, deep structure with a single outlet pipe?
Yeah, yeah.
And it looks like, so right now, I was out there today, and, uh, you know, you've got the grate, and then you can definitely see the sediment build up about twelve to eighteen inches, it was kind of hard to gauge, and there's a single eight-inch pipe, eight to ten-inch cast iron pipe, pretty shallow, that goes into that drain manifold that's right next to it.
Right.
And it operates well, obviously, there's not a sump to gather much material, but it does, that catch basin, and you know, looking at how it's constructed there on the roadway is, there really is no way for water to bypass it unless, obviously, that pipe backs up with enough sediment and stuff. So as, as long as it is cleaned, it, that catch basin operates just as it's intended.
So, if you dug it by hand, how far down could you go?
I couldn't get the rim off, I, I tried.
What do you think, Bob?
Just three feet.
It's probably a two to three foot.
Until you hit what?
The concrete bottom.
Oh.
There's no sump.
There's no sump, no, no way to get one in there, fill it with stone, anything?
You'd have to rip it off.
No, they did that because there's a utility in the way, probably.
Probably a la, a gas or power line, yeah.
A water, probably, yep.
Yeah, that's...
Any of the residents here?
When they reconstructed Salem Street.
No?
None of the, um, abutters are present this evening, however, um, the, not necessarily the detention pond, but the berm that was, um, put at the bottom before you get to Salem Street, that was done at a meeting that we had with one of the director abutters that had concerns about, um, the runoff from Salem Street coming out to Nelson Street. I did share with them that there was a proposal to eliminate that from what was approved by the planning board, and that mem, um, that particular homeowner expressed, um, some concerns with moving forward with removing that and thought that maybe it should remain, and that's why we brought it to the board for an official vote.
Just, just for the water?
Yeah, you know, we, we were going to come in for the pond, and then we discussed with Rebecca that there was that concern, so she wanted us to come in, so we're kind of tackling both items here. Um, but I know that, and that, that concern came up, um, because there was visible flow turning the corner right at that catch basin, and it's, again, it was because, with that catch basin full of material, it, it doesn't take much water to fill up.
Yeah.
But now that the pipe is exposed, the pipe is able to handle that flow, um, and operates as normal, so...
And TEC said that, uh, they're okay with the catch basin, and what about the berm?
They were okay with both, in terms of the catch basin remaining clean and that the stormwater, um, basin would, in fact, meet the stormwater design requirements. The only other, uh, information I'd like to provide is that another abutter, um, who is doing work within the same vicinity, expressed some concerns over the proposal in the sense that there might be a need for future improvements down Nelson Street, and if there is a need for future improvements, that they would like to make sure that this is addressed and not, does not need to be re-engineered, and then re-engineered again once improvements decide to be made. But it was honestly just a, uh, an opinion...
Yeah, it kind of goes towards, we, we removed the pond entirely from the right-of-way, um, and it will still alleviate some of the flooding concerns, um, so that should alleviate any of his concerns about, uh, his, any potential improvements affecting the operation of this pond. Another comment about the spillway exiting the pond, by short, if, if the road would be widened, you can shorten that spillway and it's not going to alter the design of the pond.
So you're basically looking for approval to do the stormwater management recalculation and, and the berm and the, and the...
Yeah, so I think Peter has basically confirmed, what you see in front of you with that design, and there's some two summary sheets there that do kind of show the comparison and the flows, um, he's confirmed, I believe, that it, and he agrees that it wor, it still works.
Mm-hmm.
My hope is kind of what I described, that, uh, based on some discussions today, that we'd like to potentially shift that pond to the side. I can say that I reduced the footprint by probably five to ten percent between these two proposals, and it was a reduction of two percent at the hundred-year storm, and by reducing that end length, I'd be lucky to hit that same, I'd still be in the two percent range. So obviously, that would need to be confirmed by Peter.
Yeah.
Um, so my hope is that I might be able to supply that information to Rebecca, and then as long as Peter reissues a memo confirming that, that the board be acceptable, that we don't need to come back at the next meeting if it's the same...
Well, the engineers should be, you guys should be working like you always have been, behind the scenes anyway, and then we'll just get the update. If we need to pull you in, we'll pull you in, but if they agree, is that amenable to the board?
Yeah.
Go ahead with the calc's and see what they are.
I'm fine, yeah.
So is the board amenable to, like, voting, voting to accept this change of the stormwater and then conditional upon updating the letter?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to change the stormwater.
So motion?
Long, long as, uh, Peter agrees to it, um, yep.
Yeah.
Second it?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
And does that vote count for the, does that go with the situation?
Would say modificate.
Yeah.
Yeah, modificate, yep, so, um...
Minor change?
Yep.
You want?
Um, I'm going to go off the, I mean...
Is this a release?
We have a A and R thirty-two, seventh street planning, but, uh, I'm, I'm just, well, Wally's here and everybody's here, um, Wally, I want to turn it over to you, and, um, I didn't realize that, um, Woody Cammett has passed away.
Yeah.
And, I'd like to just turn it over to you and, um, say thank you, and I've heard you sent flowers and everything, so...
Yeah, send flowers to the board.
If you have anything to say, please say it, right now, please.
No, no, we get the, no, it was, um, yeah, it was very sudden.
Tell how much work you did with him.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, so, so, um, Woody started a relationship with the board back in the days, back in the early nineties, when we started rewriting the entire subdivision control law, and, um, and the outdated zoning map that goes ba, way back, we used to have it up there, uh, back to the sixties, and it took seven years to actually get that up to speed. So Woody Cammett's, um, role with the town of Groveland, uh, really can't be measured, um, lightly. It was a heavy impact, uh, hundreds, probably thousands of man-hours to benefit this town, and, and getting Groveland, um, literally on the map, not to use that as a pun, but to get our zo, our zoning maps up to date, the aquifer protection, that, that map right behind you, if you look, that was one of the maps that we did, and with Woody's help, uh, and that took seven years to bring up to speed, and there was all kinds of history there. Um, and then there was the, uh, the zoning bylaws for a ten-year project, uh, the master plan that started, that, uh, actually, when we first started that project, the, uh, Carmel Carmelup, Massachusetts, when we started that endeavor, wrote back to us and gave us a copy of the nineteen sixty-one, it's an old book like this. And they said, "Don't let this happen to you," and that's exactly what it was. Don't do a master plan and let it sit on the shelf, it's a living document going. And we took a good ten years on that project and with help from the citizens of Groveland got funding in. And today, some of Woody's, um, ideas, help, bylaws, a, a lot of them we're still discussing today, uh, have benefited Groveland and, uh, Groveland owes a, a large amount of gratitude, uh, to Woody and his family, um, for the sacrifices and, uh, the benefits that this town and its residents have today. Uh, sidewalks in certain areas was one of the biggest things for the mothers pushing strollers and everything like that. It was a big push to get that, that in. And there's so many memorable moments and even with his health failing, he was here not too long ago. Um, still helping out the board, not charging the town and everything else, so. Um, Iwin is one of the representatives, uh, for the town of Groveland and represented the planning board and signed the book and sent flowers and, and all of that, so. So, many thanks, Woody.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Wally. You're welcome.
Okay, so we'll get back to that. So, um, Tom, plan, uh.
So, this.
The background for, um, uh, thirty-two Center Street A and R.
So, this is a, a little bit of a unique situation. Um, I received a call from the homeowner the other day about, uh, trouble that they were having with, um, getting some financing. So, we did some research and tried to pull some, uh, additional information to kind of figure out what was going on and it looks as though there was a nineteen eighty-six subdivision plan that was approved that, um, created five lots, um, at this particular location at thirty-two Center Street and then the, or the applicant at that time decided that they no longer wanted to proceed with the subdivision, so they submitted another plan to put the lot back where it was originally with one contiguous parcel, but still carved out one lot from the subdivision and then built another house. So, essentially, the lot was never legally created and the deeds kind of caused a little bit of a mess in terms of trying to track that down and all referenced a nineteen eighty-six plan that was never constructed. So, one of the reasons that the homeowner was experiencing some trouble after some further review appeared to be because there was never a formal legal delineation performed to create the actual lot. So, I, I had contacted the homeowner and, and they were, um, reached out to the contractor doing some work on their home who referenced, uh, Bill Holt and Bill Holt got dragged into this to cre, create and file an A and R, uh, on behalf of the homeowner in order to officially legally create the lot as well as officially dissolve the, or state that the nineteen eighty-six subdivision will not be constructed.
Yeah, that expired in, whether it was or not, seven years anyway.
Right.
But the lot was created.
Yeah, so what was, you got a piece of paper there, Bill, so we can see it? Because there was a, a few lots in the town of Groveland that were actually, uh, houses just kind of popped up on illegal lots and, you know, back in the day, Pat Skeena was looking at this.
This was the original subdivision of Groveland, three lots.
Yeah.
It's off Center Street, you say?
Not Center Street, yep.
Oh, down on Johnson's, Johnson's Palm area?
Yeah, right across the old pump well, house.
Oh, yeah, wow, that, that came up years ago. I remember that. Okay.
That was in nineteen eighty-six and nineteen.
Ninety-nine.
Ninety-nine, uh, Mr. Arnold had done a plan for the current owner of this lot back then.
What's that?
Chapter three eighty plan, but I don't think, uh, is the issue, I think Floyd's picked up on the fact that there was lots, now there is no lots and we'll just sign off the planning board term, lot six, which is the, uh, Perry's property in the thirty-two.
Now, the homes built on both lots now?
There is homes on both lots, that's sure to help here in the driveway. Actually, this is the new house, twenty-eight, on these three lots, scattered one in the line, so.
When, the house go up? Okay.
Yeah, ninety-nine.
This is down in that lowland area, right?
No, it's up, it's up high.
Is it up high?
Yep.
Back up, okay. Because I remember we had something years ago, I was on the board at this time, and, and there was a, an issue back there, um, on that, so, so it, it's existing.
Well, if you did, it's supposed to be created in A and R, but it's always, it's always.
I'm a little lost, Bill. Which lot do you want to do?
Well, what it was, it was originally five lots, uh, six lots, one to three-four, and then six was the house.
Six.
I think it was existing.
And this, uh, this house here exists, twenty-eight.
That one?
It exists already. There's already a house there.
They're not gonna be able to do that.
They have a hundred fifty, fifty-one feet of frontage on Center Street and four and a half acres, four and a half acres of land. So, there's plenty of area in front of it, on Center Street.
I don't understand what.
Because it was a subdivision and it divides all the li, lines, without going back to the planning board, there was a confusion as to whether what, six consists or the five consists and whether the lots were.
Essentially, you can't create a lot without going through the subdivision or an A and R. And they did not go through either since the subdivision was never built, so the lot was never created, even though.
Yeah.
So, there's nothing else?
Yeah, there was, there was a history on why this didn't get signed, but, you know why? Yeah, it's, it's tough. Yeah, I remember this too. We went out on it. So, there, there were reasons why, why this thing, and then, and then, uh, and then a house beamed in on it. So.
It's really just a legal formality.
I, I'm familiar with it. It's in. Does it come, I just want to look at the plan. It's got a hundred fifty feet and the three oh three-five and circles and. Yeah.
Almost anywhere.
Yeah, yeah, I see, over there. So, so which was the new one? I'm looking at the six or five.
So, six, six was the original lot.
Right.
That was when you had the house. Then this was the new house, was done in ninety-nine.
Ninety-nine, okay.
But they thought it was a lot.
And what's this now? Okay, so, so we're just going in, so this was, um.
So, we're gonna eliminate.
So, why are you showing the, um?
Just to sort of eliminate those lines.
No, it does. Why are you showing the, uh, the cul-de-sac?
Just to show that we're gonna eliminate and put.
Oh, I see, okay.
Gonna eliminate those lines, as noted here, we're gonna eliminate the lines.
Okay.
And consolidate that lot into one big lot again.
So, it's, I mean, I mean.
There's four point one.
And this one here is. Yeah, I'm, I'm familiar with it. I know the history, but it's, it's in, so.
So, that's just more to clarify each final.
Right. Motion to endorse.
Oh.
Get the Form A.
Do we have a pin?
Oh, save it.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
And you're still in the house, is that it? Is that it? We refinancing? Hey, the rates are good. That's okay. The, uh, eight hundred square feet or bigger or? No, that's, that's why we made that, we checked, changed that lot to, it seems eight hundred, nine hundred square feet, it's, uh.
It's already there.
Did you see the building inspector already? Yeah. This one's a little different, but, you know, we do, I remember this. It's half and twenty, you have twenty-seven years, you know, remember that. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, you gotta check.
What's?
I need a check. I want a check.
Fifty bucks at the lot, just to check?
That's all it is.
Yeah. So, instead of an A and R, you would go with the lot line adjustment?
Well, line adjustment is fifty.
Yeah.
A and R is five hundred.
Right.
Yep.
Is that amenable to the board?
Yeah, so.
Okay.
We save your money? Yes, I'm in Groveland. No, I, I wanna make it out of my own.
Say the twenties.
Yeah.
Yep.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, just gonna sign the paper copy if anybody's got a pen. Yeah, thanks.
Oh, Wally was good enough. Date had already fallen, so.
Only because I remembered the date or asked for it. Bob, you gonna sign three copies of that? Okay.
Yes. And Rebecca got the check, so we're set.
We're good. Okay. Good night.
No.
Is Bill here for seven thirty-three? Is that up tonight?
This is the only, the second one, so it was the third one.
Continue, okay. Can we continue it in a motion?
You can continue seven thirty-three.
Yeah. Motion to continue, but Bill, you got a date for that? Just, uh, seven thirty-three?
Seven seventeen, so, we, um, our next meeting, the meeting will be the first Tuesday, uh, first and third Tuesday of the month. The first Tuesday of next month is September third, the day after Labor Day.
We ain't gonna be around.
I don't believe that the board will, will have a forum, so the next meeting will be September seventeenth. So, when I spoke with the applicant, uh, Deena, she had signed a continuance to September seventeenth, um, if the board were amenable to having their third meeting in September.
So, um, so is that the drop dead date or she put it to the end of the month?
She put it until the seventeenth, but I can get her to amend it if the meeting will not be there.
Yeah, the extensions always try to, I mean, we can go out sooner, but you always have to write those letters all the time and then approve them. So, did, did, did we already prove the letter for the seventeenth extension?
It's just, the, the continuance was just timestamped with the clerk, so it was just for the, the time restraints under the Mass General Law.
Right, right.
Um, however, we can vote on the continuance for them this evening and then we can push it to a later date if you'd like and I can have her amend it.
Yeah, so, um, so fly motion for the, um, to accept the continuance, but to see if we can modify the date to, uh, just the end of the month, September thirty, something like that.
Am I, am I the chairman or not?
If that's what you would like to do.
Yeah, that's, just in case something hiccups.
Yeah, you could still have, what are you saying? You could still have the meeting.
Yeah, still the meeting, but that we have to vote on something, you know?
If that's what you would like to do.
Yeah. And then accept the continuance, yeah.
So, that's the motion to continue until the seventeenth, but adjust the continuance for the end of the month?
Yeah.
Second.
Oh, favor?
Aye. And then motion to continue to the seventeenth?
Well, we have a couple other items on the.
Oh, no, I mean the, uh, seven thirty-three.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, two-part, so, uh, motion to continue the hearing.
So, one motion to continue.
Need a second?
What second?
Oh, favor?
Aye. Thirty-three.
Two forty-five, right.
Is that you guys? Eight?
Yep.
Yeah, we got.
So, do you want me to hand these out, Rebecca? Okay, sure. How about these? Do you want me to hand these out?
Yeah, just need a copy to see what the plan is. Did you just add any one house?
Just one, though. You're trying to stop the side, just down by.
A two lot? So, yeah. Do you already have frontage though on, uh? Yeah, so you get, um, you get the frontage on King. Yeah, and where's the house going to back?
Right back, yeah.
So, where's it gonna access? Here or through there?
Through here. Through the side, so we didn't have a shared driveway.
Yeah.
Because you guys didn't like the shared driveway the last time we presented the plan.
No.
Yeah, it's, like, no, I already, there's nothing wrong with it. Get my house in, I was thinking, what do you see there? Yeah, um. Yeah, no, that's, that's really good.
Yeah, four point nine and just.
Because we did, um, we did a couple off of King Street, just on the way from you, actually Steve Daniels did it, where he had, he could do this, but he didn't have access. So, on paper, you gotta show you have adequate access and all that stuff. And he did, but he didn't have to build it. He was able to, he just had, he had to show that you can do it. So, just trying to.
So, this would be like the turn room, same test?
Right, but if you could, what, just refresh my memory from twelve years ago, what was the, what was the issue with the other?
Originally, it was gonna be a shared driveway. This driveway was going to, there would be a cul-de-sac.
Yeah.
And then, and then, uh, extended driveway out here.
Yeah.
We've, um, we've, now we're proposing, uh, with the next stage.
Yeah.
Driveway coming in.
Right.
And then continuing, and then the house out in back. So, there's no longer a shared driveway, these two separate accesses.
Yeah, um, just thinking here for a second. You guys added land down here, right, or something?
We added a little, that little triangle.
Yeah.
See it?
Yeah, okay, so that wasn't here?
Right, yeah, this little tiny skinny sliver.
Right, so that made it fifty foot all the way here, yeah, so that. I'll suggest, and we'll, we'll see what the board wants to do. Um, do you guys remember the King Street and some of the other, okay. Some of the other subdivisions that we did on the single lot subdivisions for, for, um, circumstances just like this, is that we had to show, under the A and R handbook, you have to show that you have adequate access and Rebecca, you can back me up on this, um, onto that. Uh, and if, if there was another way in, uh, you still got the A and R planned, but you still had to show it was adequate access and get in and that it, and that it could be built. And we've done that in Groveland, I'm gonna say probably six times in my tenure.
Not adequate access, there's no frontage.
Right, so you have, so the frontage would be, is derived into here.
The frontage is the roadway.
Right.
So, the same thing that happened on seven thirty-three Salem Street, they have two roadways. One of them is not being, the reason it's not being constructed is because there's no frontage. The frontage is coming off of a street that is not going to be constructed. So, the reason they're filing a one lot subdivision is not because of access, it's because of frontage.
So, what's the frontage out in here?
Oh, yeah.
So, it's a hundred and forty, so then we have to go in at least a hundred and fifty feet to derive the frontage.
Just to get the frontage. So, the roadway's not necessarily being built, it's just being like, like the Mapleview one being said, that they can construct it and that's where they're getting their frontage for that particular lot.
So, the waivers come in on the roadway, et cetera, et cetera, but we have to show a hundred and fifty feet of a fifty foot right of way for the adequate access and the driveway to go in that direction. Or at least have this in, are you saying they show, show this in here too and then if they have a back way in, they can use, they gotta, they gotta show it, but do they have to build it?
Well, we, we've gone with.
We're intending to.
This driveway's here, so this is already built, I mean.
This is going to be the access.
So, you want to have it.
Oh, they want to build it.
Yeah, they want to build it, okay, so that's easy then, okay.
This will also need, um, heavy, uh, conservation review. They will be filing an N O I. There are in, within the hundred foot buffer, the driveway is in the one hundred foot buffer, stormwater infrastructure is in the one hundred foot buffer. So, due to the sensitivity of the site, there will also be an N O I filing.
What's over here?
That's someone else's hand. Actually, if you want to look at this, Wally, this is, uh. So, this is our lot.
Yeah.
There's the access and here's all the neighbors.
I would like to take a look at that, please.
Sure.
Okay, yeah.
Please, please.
Yep.
Can I take a look at that, please?
Absolutely.
All right, that answers that question. Done a bunch of these.
King Street.
Right.
Intersection.
Yep.
Center Street, this is Stickney's Rock down here, this is state land.
Lot subdivisions, it's actually good to do.
So, that's the frontage coming in, because our driveway comes in.
But you don't have to, at least you don't have to build this thing all the way up in here to the street standards, you gotta build a hundred and fifty feet of it, you're gonna use that for the frontage.
This is getting squared off like this, the frontage is here, and then the new driveway will come in and a house back here.
Yeah, and I mean, it's.
This is a, well, with this strip, this is ballpark five and a half, this is four and a half acres.
Okay.
Uh, hun, a hundred and forty-nine.
Yeah.
Feet of frontage, uh, fifty-nine, I think, feet of frontage, and then it, uh, varies in width, but, uh, uh, there's a.
Yeah, oh, good.
deed here.
Good. It's just, it's a tough site, that's why she's talking about all those. Yeah.
Which gives, which makes this piece, it narrowed to forty-five feet.
Yeah, I remember bussing.
That triangle from bussing, which gives us a fifty feet.
Piece in there, yeah.
Where's the house gonna go?
He did, yeah.
Ballpark right in here, so the, the.
He keeps everything.
So, here's, here's the, sir, the, the next page, it shows you a hundred foot, but this, this is, this is all open, this is, you know, plenty of land.
Right, yeah. It's, it's just to cut through the driveway.
So, and then the, the placement of the driveway, there's a, this, this was an, an old access path.
Yeah, mine are limited, yeah.
It's kind of grown in on this side.
I'm growing them.
It still exists through this main body of land.
Yep.
And it's, uh, the, the placement was chosen due to, uh, crops of ledge. There's a bunch in here on the corner, so it's path of least resistance, yeah.
Yeah.
So, it's trying to utilize the path of least resistance, least amount of trees coming down.
So, it's a hundred and fifty feet in.
The, uh, the pathway already exists and, uh, trying to eliminate, minimize, you know, blasting and hammering.
Right. Right.
Andy put the last driveway in, and the client comment was very happy with that.
Yeah, I saw that, it looks great, it's nice.
Thank you.
So, you're just here for, um, for the application?
This is for the filing, so they just submitted the form C, which Bob just signed.
Yeah.
They submitted the D one, the form D, the form E, the letter granting, uh, permission to enter the site on the property, and then she's also done the escrow agreement, but now we just need the fees, so that's the five thousand dollar fee for engineering review. Any of that that was not utilized will be returned to you. And then the additional application fee, since the preliminary plan was not filed, uh, the application fee has broken down in the subdivision rules and ranks of two thousand dollars plus one thousand dollars.
So, I'll just write that check out?
Yeah, so you got three total, three total plus five and then drop them in.
So, I need to do one checkup, like I said?
Yes, Rebecca.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
It's fairly level, huh?
Yeah, up there, yeah.
I was looking at the profile.
Yeah. Yeah, from, from King Street, not, but after that.
Yeah, it's level, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, uh, insulating, it's, uh, you know, but, uh, yeah, no, not that bad, no big hills.
No. It'll be nice. Motion to accept the application and the fees.
Second. Favor?
Aye.
Thank you, guys.
You're welcome.
Okay, so now we have to come back on the seventeenth.
So, I will provide you a drafted legal notice, uh, just confirm that you're all set with it, then you'll need to.
Can I keep this?
Uh, two consecutive Tuesdays prior to the meeting.
Okay.
I will get you the dates, the, or say the dates, and then I'll give you the mailing instructions for mailing the notice to the others.
Okay.
And then we'll, we'll be in communication, so.
Okay, awesome, thank you so much, Rebecca. So, I, I'll leave all the?
Yes, please.
Okay. All right.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thanks, guys.
Great night, thank you.
Yep.
Thanks.
You guys get to leave now?
Yeah, maybe.
Probably not.
Yeah.
You got, putting out open spaces.
I, I actually have one item.
Yeah, uh, there's a couple, old business, um. I got two, I got one, too. It's just, springing up, uh, I think it was, was it the thousand foot water line for the hole? We should cut, we were talking about cutting it down to five hundred on the bylaw.
Oh, yes, at the last, um, public meeting, there was talks about, um, revising subdivision rules and regulations, and particularly the section that addresses applicants to connect to water within a thousand feet of the development. And so, the board had addressed, uh, expressed interest in potentially reviewing a change and making it five hundred feet.
Yes.
The, um, was there a subdivision that came to mind on that, that someone brought that up, I mean, that's kind of an unusual thing?
It's been brought up a couple times through.
The, I'll just give you the history of it, why it was that way. When, um, Charles Ayers came in to do, um, his subdivision up off of Wood Street, and, and in the Nichols Village.
Yeah.
Um, nobody wanted to extend the water line out, so we put it in the regulation that if the water was in there a thousand feet, you had to reach out and grab it. It was also a way, and, um, Jim was big on this because the Water Sewer Board never extended the sewer line or the water lines.
Exactly.
So, it was a way at the time that we did it in ninety-seven, I think that may have been written, ninety-eight, to, um, to get water line extension and, and start getting, um, you know, the town with hydrants, et cetera, et cetera, instead of wells everywhere that everybody was putting in. So, that's, that's the reason why it was put in. Um, and it did come in handy quite a few times, particularly getting watered down on, um, what was that, Seven Star Road, right? Where they came out the backside and went back over and connected and looped through Main Street? That big line, and then down by Kentucky. Yeah, it was Nichols, so Nichols had to do it under the special permit, and then Ayers was doing it there, and then they were gonna connect down the backside from Wood Street, back down, going down the hill there to, um, I think it was Seven Star. So, that's why it was in there. Um, it, it is a way to, I mean, you know, there can be a waiver to anybody that wants to.
Yeah, can we waiver it?
Yeah, we can, we can, any, any applicant coming up can request a waiver to it, sure, I mean, I'm amenable to that. It might be just for a.
I mean, just for three lots or, or even, you know, two lots, you know, for a thousand feet of water line.
What they're doing, the.
I mean, I, I mean, is, is this, this is the hole eventually, probably.
It's not all, it's, it's what they're charging for a fee.
Fee, yeah, the fee.
The fee is getting crazy.
Crazy for the water board, you can't afford it.
What do you mean, give me a.
So, they're gonna, they're gonna drill wells, you know what it is?
An eight inch main is fifty thousand to tap. So, do you only have two houses?
Yeah.
That's unreasonable.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's why.
That's unreasonable, water board, what are you doing over there?
Yeah, well, you know.
Um, so what about requesting a waiving of that fee? They're their own independent agency over there, right?
We can't.
We cannot.
No, we can't waive their fees.
We cannot touch their fees.
No, no, I didn't mean it that way. The applicant can request a waive of that fee, right?
They have requested to waive the fees in relation to laying the infrastructure, mobilizing and providing the loop, but they have only, at this point in time, to my knowledge, acknowledged that they will.
I mean, they're trying to work with the water board.
Waive two connection fees and that is it, they must provide everything else.
Yeah.
So, typically, the contractor would, would put in the pipe, actually, and then they would inspect it and do all that.
I mean, when I was building, the water department would supply the pipe, we would have to install it.
Right.
Okay?
Okay.
And now they don't, they don't wanna do nothing, and they wanna charge you for. They wanna charge you for everything, everything, fees, tie-ins and everything.
Is there, um, how about, just, and it's just that project, that's the only one really that's come out?
Right now, it's the start of it, you know, you never know what's coming up.
You know what I mean, any subdivision's gonna have a fifty grand. There's a big one coming up.
What's that?
By King Street, on the top of the hill, by the, the Husbaum, Hunter's Haven.
Oh, is that still, that's not a big one, they were still gonna merge land together, I don't know, did that change now?
No, I think that's a, what's it, fourteen lots?
So, yes, the land has been purchased, they are, put together a concept of design.
Atomopolis is, yes.
Yeah, Atomop, who bought it?
I, I, not to.
Was it the guy next door?
Huh?
Was it the, the farm next door?
No, no.
Oh, so did who buy it or somebody else?
Local contractor, but, yeah.
Local chemist.
So, well, King Street, in particular, there's a hydrant up there somewhere you guys put in, right? There's, there's no King.
No, that, that needs a water, that needs improvement, but.
Yeah.
What, what my point was, what I was just saying is, if they want the, uh, line extended or, uh, improved, but they still wanna charge a big fee.
Yeah, they wanted tie-in fees and everything.
So, I, I understand that.
Yeah.
So, um, so, is, can we ask the water board to come in and see if we can work with them to, on these new subdivisions, try to get some kind of middle ground? Yeah, we can ask them.
Yeah, we can ask them.
Could ask them.
I can certainly reach out to the commission and ask.
And see what, and see what their thought process is, um, and, and see if we can, you know, because it's a betterment to the town, they get to charge for the water, there's hookups and all that, and maybe we can reach the middle ground here, is that, because it doesn't make sense to put fourteen wells in at ten thousand bucks a whack, okay?
It does if you start at fifty grand in the red.
Well, no. I'm not disagreeing, but, no, if, if.
I mean, well, I mean, when we, when I used, Bill, we used to put the water made in, and if anybody tied in, I got the water, I got the water tie-in for putting the water online.
Right, we did that on, on, um, Seven Star Road, there was a few that did that, that, uh, I don't know if it was yours.
Yeah, well, it was, it was on King, it was on King Street.
You shared the cost, yeah.
It was on King Street, so, I mean, but now, they want the tie-in, they, they don't want, you can't, you, you can't charge the person.
Yeah, it, it, let's see what their thinking is on that.
It's one way.
Yeah, it's one way, it's all, all about them and nothing about.
I, I had asked.
Because it's a betterment to the town to do it that way, to get hydrants, for fire protection and all that stuff. Uh, because you can't put fire protection on the street, yeah, what do you do about that?
So.
So, that means the town would have to put it in, and that's kind of weird, a fourteen lot subdivision, you can't.
Right.
Can't do fire ponds and underground stuff.
Well, they'll do underground tanks.
Yeah, and that's, it's just not an efficient way, I mean, Rocky would spin that way.
Well, they, they'll do it.
Boxman, Boxman has it.
No, I'm not discounting, I think it's better, let's see if we can get some middle ground in that.
Boxman has it, I just, I think a thousand feet's too far.
Yeah, exactly, I mean, I looked at other towns, Georgetown has it, West Newbury has it.
Yeah.
So.
I mean, we can, we can do individual waiving, but let's see what water, let's have a meeting with water board, just a quick one, and see, and see where they're thinking.
I agree.
And say, say, hey, we got a couple of projects coming up, we love town water, we'd like to do this, can we, can we get some, some help with the fees?
I know they wanna, I, I know they wanna loop everything, which is, I know, I understand why.
Yeah.
To get the flow and everything else, get the sediment out of it, but, you know.
What else?
It, it's crazy.
What else did you wanna, uh, bring up about?
Yeah, Rebecca, what, she has more than one.
If we did any changes in the subdivision bylaws.
So, essentially, I'm pursuing an opportunity to get our subdivision rules and regulations codified and put online in a easily searchable document that we can update.
Yep.
And I, and as part of that effort comes with a legal analysis that the firm would provide for the board to look at any, um, changes and updates that they think that should be made or legal inconsistencies. Uh, the firm is E code three sixty, um, they're looking at our zoning bylaws currently right now, so.
They out of mass?
Um, so, I, I don't know where they're based out of, I know that they do this for a lot of different municipalities in Massachusetts, though.
I've heard, I've heard of that already, yeah.
So, but I just figured it was an opportunity to actually do our subdivision rules and regs, because they're actually in a PDF document, you can't really search them to update them, it's a little, a little difficult.
Yeah, yeah, we.
Like, with things of that nature, just in typical formatting aspects of things. And then typically, maybe we would discuss updating the application forms or taking the fees out of the subdivision rules and regulations, so we don't need to necessarily go through a public hearing process to change applications and or fees, but everything else would remain, and just look at some of those, um, those types of changes, uh, basic changes that we could look at, and then include some of the, the more hefty items that the board sees fit, uh, at that point in time, so that we can address them all together, it'll be more cost efficient in terms of, uh, legal notice, et cetera.
Yeah, subdivision rules changes, just, just a hearing, vote and change, so.
But it goes with a legal notice.
Yeah, yeah.
We don't have to go to a town meeting?
And we have to cover that, and that's all work.
We don't have to go to a town meeting?
No, no, not subdivision rules, and that's why it's a, it's a living document, it's not a zoning bylaw.
All right.
Um, subdivision rules and regs, I mean, when, when we wrote that, and, and it was, believe it or not, the history of that, and, and since we mentioned Woody earlier, that's where they came out, but, um, uh, that was filed and I had to go do the filing with it. Well, it was the first comprehensive subdivision control law in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts in twenty-five years, and they didn't know what to do with it at the registry of deeds to record it in, they actually had to call down the boss to them and get it through. But it was, uh, it didn't take long for what we thought was the greatest piece of legislation written in Groveland for a problem to occur where somebody found a hole in it. So, it became, it, it always was intended to be a living document just like this, so when changes come and time moves and technology changes, we, we just change it that way, so it's, it's time.
And I, I particularly like this program because what it does is it tracks the changes, so if there's any.
Yeah, color codes on it, yeah.
Like question as to when it was amended or what it originally said, it documents that.
It's, it's, I, I think that's a good idea, because, I mean, it took a long time to get it, we, we used to have to print them and have them available, and then, then we finally got them into a PDF form so that we could at least make them available. So, no, I think that's a great idea, what's the expense though?
Um, the proposal that I just received, um, I, I believe it was a little over two thousand dollars.
Oh, any money, okay. Fine, yeah.
Maybe the water department can kick in.
That's, that's easy. None of that, so, okay, so how about if we bring up, uh, let's get the water board in, if you can get a motion them. Um, any of the subdivisions, we, we can waive the, the length of pipe right now, until we get, let's hear from them first, if we have to waive it or waive it.
You gotta be careful how you waive it, because you set a precedent. No, I just.
I, I agree, I agree, but I wanna hear what the water board says, because they may not know that these things are coming in and the loss of revenue to the town.
Oh, they know, they already, they already talked to the water board.
They attended.
No, I mean all the other ones.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, yeah, the other ones.
They, they attended meetings, the upcoming subdivisions for design phases have met with the water into a commission.
Yeah, I, I wanna hear their, what they're, maybe they know something we don't, uh, let, let's see what they know.
Yeah, they need the, the money to finish the bill.
You said it first.
Oops, sorry.
Oh.
Gosh.
Um, okay, is that it?
Anyway.
So, the only other update I have, if you'll bear with me, I, I will try and be very brief, is that, um, this is an open space and recreation plan update. I, um, have been tasked with, uh, by the community preservation committee to take on the update for the recreation plan, so as part of your packet at the very end, there is a list of goals and objectives that were put together based upon the survey that was sent out back in the April-June timeframe, and essentially, none of the goals have necessarily changed, the, the overall vision for the community is relatively the same in terms of what we're looking to do, protection of our aquifers, expansion, um, of our open spaces, and making sure that we're acquiring properties that connect our existing open spaces, um, and providing additional recreational opportunities and additional protections for the habitat that resides within Groveland. And so, what, you're seeing that the main changes of this particular plan come in the form of the objectives and how we actually reach that goal, reach the goals that have essentially been at our open space and recreation plan since nineteen ninety-seven. So, I've been going through to all of the boards and commissions and committees and asking for additional feedback and input as to any additional objectives or additional comments that they would like to make, and then we will be holding a public meeting in October for residents to attend to provide additional feedback in relation to what questions they've answered in the survey and just what, uh, residents have brought to our attention and, and different boards and committees.
Okay, and for two.
If you wanna take it home and review it and then bring it back, um.
Yeah, I see some of the stuff where, like the five-year action plan, this was, um, we did this a couple of times, but it didn't, it, it, because of the changing of the board and, and all that stuff over there, uh, that's where I call it constitutional memory fails to hear sometimes with a board, and, um, and they forget they gotta do it, so, and then, you know, just people retire and move on and stuff like that. So, uh.
But I think with now, we have, where we have a full-time.
Yeah, well, we used to send this out, we used to send out a.
She's on top of it, so we might be able to follow, follow through it with it a little more.
It wasn't, it, it wasn't us that we didn't, it's just.
No, no, I, I understand that, well, I'm just saying.
Five-year plan up the speed, so, yeah, so a little push is always good.